No, we can pray on now.
That started working in practice the worst of the why. He was asking, he raised a back motion. My friend said, I know. Yeah, all right. Talking about the why and how. One day it's saturated. All that was. They knew better, like they knew better. Right. Made me think like, you know, they should train stop, right? Even though it's not that big, just to always.
Yeah, no, that's really important.
Oh, my God, I was like, poor, but you imagine. Anyway.
Michael, here's your thing.
Yeah.
She's saying this number of chicken. She'll be in her location. You remember how long we used to get?
Yeah, maybe thirty. How long has it been on? Oh, exactly, to get out of the kitchen. She can walk out of your. You're thirsty, honey?
Hi Becky.
Jeremy. Hi Carrie. How are you?
I'm good, I'm tired.
He was telling me he didn't think you'd make it because you had quite a ride.
Yeah, um, so. When I was leaving on Saturday, my flight from St. Martin to, because I had a connection flight, so it was St. Martin to, um. Philadelphia, then from Philadelphia to Bradley. And my flight from. St. Martin to Philly got canceled because the plane was overweight. And I hate flying, so once I heard it was overweight, I was like, get me, get me off the plane right now. So they were asking for volunteers, so I volunteered and they ended up paying for my hotel room, transportation to and from the hotel room. And I got a $1,200 credit, which was sick. So I stayed an extra day, I was able to leave and then once I got in, they had a different flight, so I left from St. Martin to Miami. And once I got to Miami, they delayed my flight from like. I was supposed to leave at like seven forty and I didn't end up taking off the ground until like ten because of weather. So I got, I like, when I walked in the door, it was like a little after one thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
So it was a day.
Made a bunch of money, good job.
Thank you.
Hi Nate.
Hi Becky, how are you?
Hello.
Hi Carrie.
Here he made it, he had a heroic trick poem.
Yeah, I was, uh. Catching the end of that right there.
Yeah.
No, I was catching the end of that right there.
Oh, oh, catching the end of it.
I'm glad, glad, I wasn't sure Carrie if you were gonna. Make, because I knew you knew about the meeting, but it was kind of like, uh, then, you know, you had the delays and everything and I was like, oh. I just, you know, just didn't know if, uh, you know, maybe I just kind of. I don't know, anyway, but glad, glad you're here.
Me too, so I'm gonna jump off, dinner ran a little late, so now we can.
Well, yeah, you know, thank you so much, Becky, for helping us out today.
Oh, anytime, yeah, and Grace, I, I, I texted Grace and she was like, oh my God, I totally forgot. So, thank you for reaching out to me because I was, I, I was on the computer, but I was. I wasn't checking my email as much because I was focusing on other things, so thanks for reaching out. Okay, so I just. I gotta make you the host, Carrie.
Okay.
Nate, do you need to be a co-host?
Um, might as well, sure.
Okay, oh, I can't do anymore. Yes, I can, I didn't do Carrie, I gotta do you and then Carrie. My son is on the iPad from. Georgia. Reading with his son, the technology is amazing.
That's so cute.
Well, have a good meeting.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Carrie, I'm just gonna, uh. I might just be reading the bylaw for the few minutes I have here, so. Unless, unless you need anything, uh, just to holler.
I just have one question, did you talk to the, um, applicant for the Anrad for tonight?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, I meant to, uh, email him and then, uh. We didn't have the, um. The Zoom link yet. So I didn't, and then I just forgot, so, you know, it's, uh.
Like, I told him when I, because he came in for the application, I told him that these are pretty. Straightforward for the most part, so it shouldn't be. Too crazy. Um, so I think. The person handling it. She emailed me and I informed her. Around like, one o'clock this afternoon, but. I haven't heard back from her.
Do you know if, uh. So did they give like, uh, the written notice to the town clerk or whatever?
Uh, that's a good question, I don't remember because that was like, I think that was Tuesday right before I left is when he came in with the application, so. I gotta look that over.
I don't think it really matters, but.
No, I don't, I'm.
All right. Well, uh, thanks for, uh. Reaching out to the, uh. Your agent or whoever that was.
Yeah, no problem, I, I think it's the same one handling the newest one that just came in today for sixty-four, like drive.
Yeah, nice.
That's convenient. Sorry, another question, so since I was, once I was gone, did Tom Seaford get, um. Appointed in?
He did.
Okay, just so I can fix it on my, um. My, uh. Draft minute template.
Okay. Hey Jeff.
Hi, Hawaii and Antonio.
Uh, doing well, doing well.
How are your kids doing?
I'm good, they're, uh. Getting ready for bed, so I, uh. Hopefully won't hear too much, uh, enough for upstairs.
Carrie, how are you doing? How was your vacation?
Awesome, it was really good.
Where did you go?
I went to St. Martin.
St. Martin, nice.
It was awesome.
Uh huh, you do any snorkeling?
Yes, I did, that was the first time I've ever snorkelled too.
Wow, you see any nice fish?
Yeah, and I saw a sea turtle too.
The sea turtle?
Yeah, it was pretty decently sized, it was really cool.
Nice, nice, wonderful. Well, it's good to leave Schutzebury sometimes. It's a whole world out there. Michael, you should try it sometimes, leaving, leaving Montego Road or wherever you live.
I, I would like that, that would be very cool. Sea turtles are neat, I once saw one. Year, thirty years ago when I was in Hawaii, it was just. It made me realize that we are not. Like, made for the water compared to them. They, they're just having a blast.
Good, and Carrie, how long did you stay there?
Um, I was there for a week, I was there from Saturday to Sunday, it was supposed to be Saturday to Saturday, but, um. My flight from St. Martin to Philadelphia was canceled, so that was a very interesting experience, to say the least.
So you, you suffered with another day there?
Yeah, I mean, I, it was free on the expense of the air, uh, the, uh. The, uh, air, airline, I have a fluent of American, so this is pretty awesome.
That's cool.
Oh, I'm glad you had a good time.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. As it is seven o'clock and we have a, uh. Quorum. Present, I would like to. Call this meeting of the Schutzebury Planning Board to order. Note that the meeting is being recorded. Okay. The first item on tonight's agenda is. Public comment. So I'm going to just. Go right ahead, see if there's anyone here who would like to offer public comment.
Nathan, I've got something, but I wanted to see if there's the public that wants to share anything for me.
All right, cool, okay. Well, I'm not, uh, hearing anything, so why don't you go ahead, uh, Michael?
Okay, I'll make it short, um. So I attended, so. There's a commission that the governor created about a year ago, it's called the Commission on Energy Infrastructure Sighting and Permitting. And. On Friday, I found out that they were having public hearings today to collect input and then they've got an online. Survey to, to collect, um, public comment. So I, I did both of those things, I went today, but, um, I can send the committee information if you want, but the interesting thing about this is. Figure out. Speaker just went here, come on. Yeah, I'm back, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the interesting thing about this commission is that they're looking how, how to protect the environment, yet streamline. Um, citing of. Energy infrastructure, and so one of the things that, the reason I'm bringing it up here is that one of the things they're seriously considering. Is creating a statewide body that would be the sole source for permitting for anything infrastructure. Solar, energy, storage, transmission lines. Um, the whole nine yards and bypassing. Local permitting. So that's seriously on the table and. I. I showed up and said that I thought local permitting is a good idea, but if anyone's interested, I could send you the link so you can see more about it. Um, but it directly affects us among, you know, all the other towns and cities, so FYI.
Thank you, Michael. And, uh. Mary Lou Conca, I see that you have your hand up, however, before you begin, I would like to say that I am not. Ignoring you, I do, uh. Owe you a, a response to you, uh, an email, um. So I apologize for not, uh, responding, uh, to your follow-up with me, uh, sooner. It's just been a little bit, uh, busy and, uh. I will, uh, I will do so. Now, please, Mary Lou.
Thank you, Nathan. Mary Lou Conca, I live on Wendell Road in Schutzebury, and my question is pertaining to. I see on your agenda, you have something about the, you have a, a Wheelock. Um, which I understood, an annual report. Was supposed to be, um, coming in on that project. Okay, so that's good, that's on your agenda, my question is, um. Who, who are the, I think it's the third, um, developer or overseer? I would like to know who they are and two, are any of you on the planning board familiar with? Um, when that all went in, there was a case. That went to federal court, uh, five. Of my friends actually, of Native American heritage, right, because they were. Concerned about it being a Native American burial place. And then how I understood what was happening. Was one of the. Suspected burial mounds. Was like fenced off or something? Is the planning board aware of that? And if that is really in there. Do you all know if a tribal or, you know, a, a person of Native. American heritage would ever have access? And I have asked this question before, there was, um, a gentleman in one of your meetings from Florida. Who were the developers or the overseers? But I think since then, there's even a new. Entity. So thank you.
Your first question, um. The answer is, I believe, uh, NextTerra. Um, and, you know, I might not have the name correct, I mean, it's NextTerra, but that's, uh. You know, there's like NextTerra Marketing, Next, NextTerra Energy or whatever, but it's a NextTerra company that, uh. Own, that operates the, uh, facility. I believe it says so on a placard, um, on the gate. And with respect to the other question, Mary, I, uh, I don't have an answer on that. Um, maybe, uh, Michael is, uh, you know, raising up his hand, maybe he can help.
Yeah. Yeah, there were, there was a case brought by Ralph, um. Who has since moved out of town, I'm not sure where it progressed to, but I remember that it got. Brought to federal court. Um, so it's, the status is unknown, I'm assuming nothing's happened because we haven't heard. And in terms of access, it was made pretty clear by the landowner that, um. People could not go on, that was the point of contention during the special permit process, so, um. Unless the landowner gives permission, no one else can go on the land.
Thank you, Michael, Michael, can, can I?
Mary Lou, I, uh, apologize, but we do, um. Have to, uh. We have to move on to, uh, other items in our agenda, so thank you very much for your comments and questions. And, uh. And I, and I will, uh, send you an email, um, I'll, I'll give myself, uh, I'll, I'll say I'll do it this week. Just to, to, to give myself something to, uh, latch on to. All right.
Thank you, thank you, Michael.
All right, I want to just announce that, uh, uh, you know, for six thirty, uh, this year, we have terms ending for myself, Jeff Weston. And, uh, Ashley Pycroft, Ashley was appointed, and as I, uh, understand it, um. She has, uh, taken papers out for a. One-year term.
I have.
As I understand it, Jeff has taken papers out for a three-year term and turned them into town hall. And I've taken papers out for another three-year term and I'm also in the process of getting my signatures, so. Um. Ashley, have you, uh, wrapped that up yet or is it still, uh?
I think I have nineteen. And I haven't put my own on it, but I, I, you know, I think I should get like five or ten more in case anyone's not registered. So it was very helpful that my neighbors had a party yesterday.
Was it a? Was it a mud party?
It was a mud party, yes. There was lots of, lots of happy children, happy muddy children and. Parents who could sign my papers, so it was a win-win.
Ashley, I, I wanted to say if you go to vote tomorrow, um, oh, that's what you're teaching.
No, but I am, no, because I, I have to be at work at seven thirty, so I'm gonna hit up the polls at seven, that's my plan.
I'm not sure when office workers come in, but I got, uh, like, a, a few signatures from the office workers if you just walk upstairs.
Thank you, that's a good call.
Yeah, I think you just have to be. Across the street, I'm not thinking you'd be in town hall for this, uh, where the voting's happening. There's a distance factor.
Um, you know, I'm not worried about it, I, I believe I have until April ninth. I think, but I hope to get it in a lot sooner than that. Um. Does that sound right?
You know, I think it's a lot sooner than that, I think it's more like March.
March twenty-third?
I don't have the paper in front of me, but I, I think it's, uh, you know, pancake breakfast for the firemen is, uh. Yeah, so it's probably like the Monday after that or something.
Yeah, and you, and you only need like five more in town.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, Nathan, maybe I'll stop by your house and. Get yours and, yeah, I, I can get it from my neighbor, like, it should work out, it's hard, like, it took me a couple hours of my day yesterday to, you know, walk up and down the street and. Also go to the party, which was nice, but. Um. Noted, I'll get it done, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, you know, as I understand it, there was some, um. Some forms that, uh, just had the wrong date on them for turning them in, so I'll, uh.
Mine says, uh, April ninth, but I know Grace told me, I think, a different.
Yeah, yeah, so it's earlier, uh, we'll make sure that everyone gets, uh, squared away on that.
Actually, one more thing if I can jump in, anyone who lives in Schutzebury, so even if you get there early. The people behind you in line for voting can sign. Any registered voter. And even the poll workers can vote, they're just, um, people who live in Schutzebury, that's my understanding.
But I do, I have to not be in town hall, Michael? I mean, I was a poll worker once and I couldn't do anything within like a certain amount of feet.
Yeah, you usually have to be on the, on the town common, is like the distance, if. But if you're at the driveway, you know, if you waited around a couple minutes for people pulling in and out. But there, there is that distance factor, so you're not, you're not politicking where people are voting.
Right, I'll bring it along, but I'm gonna be in and out, you know, I gotta get to Belcher Town for seven thirty, so.
Yeah, yeah, you know. Yeah, make sure to, uh, pay, uh, special attention to all the, um. Election laws to, uh, ensure that none of that is, uh, violated. I think I accidentally skipped one, but I didn't mean to, it was just the way I read the agenda, but, um. Also, a, a warm welcome to Tom Seaford is our, uh, newly appointed associate member.
Welcome.
From Tom.
Hey there, hey there, thanks so much, uh, I appreciate it all. Appreciate it very much.
Have, have you had a chance to connect with Grace?
Yeah, we're gonna do it on Thursday, that's her earliest available time.
Nice, yeah, I know Grace has been pretty busy with the, uh, election coming up here, so.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, yeah, we look forward to working with you and, uh, so that wraps up our kind of introductory items and now we can get into a little bit of. Meat and potatoes, if you will, we received, uh, approval not required application for a property on, uh, fifty-seven Lake Street Drive. There's an email from Carrie some time ago. And. Uh, we'll review that, uh, document and, uh, try and make a termination and see whether or not the board. Agrees that it was indeed a, uh, does indeed not require approval. All right, um. So I can. Share my screen. Can everyone see this, uh, the screen here?
Yes.
Okay. So we've got this, uh. This is it. And from, uh, the look of it, it just says that the, uh. The interior lot lines are to be removed. And, uh, that's it. See that Lake Drive here. Land of, uh, Randall P. Smith and Elizabeth C. Smith, this is the, uh, applicant. We've got adjacent land over here, over here. And then down here. So. It's, uh, this is a somewhat unusual. Application and because most of the. Most of these we get are looking to take a larger piece of property and make smaller pieces with it. And this is. Taking a, uh. Smaller pieces and making a larger lot with it. And, uh. I don't, I don't see anything, uh. On this plan that. Suggests that would be a, uh, subdivision. Does anybody, uh? Has anyone else had a chance to look at this?
It seems like you're unsubdividing, you're actually. Combining, so, um. So Nathan, would, uh, Athwin come next month? Or? Do you, is the applicant gonna come next month, or are we gonna discuss it now?
You know, I am. I don't believe the applicant's gonna come. I I actually. You know, Carrie mentioned that. She had. Been in touch with them earlier today. Someone that was related to the application and informed them that it was on the agenda for tonight. So. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if. You think we should wait and try and make sure that they're here so that we can? You know, I just think.
I think we should wait, yes. Robert.
Okay.
We just got this, I mean. It got sent out to us today. I think that's just because Carrie wasn't around, but.
No, 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 this this came, Carrie, you have your hand up. You wanna go ahead and?
Yeah, I believe I sent this out the Tuesday before I left. Uh, I'm double checking that right now.
Alright, that sounds.
February fifteenth. I can give like a little bit of information because he came into the office to submit it, and so he was talking to me a little about it. So, yeah, he is just combining. So it's just one large lot. His intention is to, this is an older building. That he plans to tear down and rebuild a new home. He doesn't have that quite. Detailed out yet because he had added on to this, so he doesn't know if he's gonna take down that part. As well, or keep it and kind of build around it. But, yeah. That was kind of. The main point of it.
Say that, say that again, Carrie?
Oh, sorry.
The main point of it was, what was that last point?
So he's. He's merging them all, so it's a larger lot, and he wants to, it's an existing structure right there, but it's much older, and he's been. Uh, it was suggested to him that if he wanted to add on, that he'd be better off demolishing the building and rebuilding. So I think they're trying to center it once it's. All these lots are merged.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Nathan, do you have a preference for voting tonight or waiting?
I mean, you know, I. I somewhat assumed we would vote tonight, but if. I mean, if people think we should wait, that's. You know, the only thing is that we're supposed to do something within twenty-one days. Right? So we would have to get together before our next meeting.
Sounds like we should vote then.
I would, I would say so. I mean, you know, the. Thing is that. You know, this. With an approval not required. You know, the determination we have to make is whether or not this is something that has requires approval. Under the subdivision control law. So. And what, you know, and, you know, does this? Another thing we could look at is, you know, does the, does the plan? That's shown, you know, create a violation of zoning? Which I I don't. Think it it does. And.
It it looks very straightforward, as you said. I mean, it's a different kind of dynamic because it's combining as opposed to subdividing, but. I mean, given. I I was content to wait, but given the twenty-one day requirement, it seems like taking action, since this is relatively simple, it seems reasonable.
I I think so. And Carrie, we did receive a check for seventy dollars on this one. Is that true?
Yes.
So they they must have looked at the. Our stuff and figured out how much it would cost and said, alright.
I I actually helped him with that part.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah, he he came in. That was like the first question he asked. I was like, it's funny you you ask that because we've all been discussing that like a month or two ago. But, yeah.
Robert, I support going forward also.
Oh, good. I was gonna ask if if. If if you want to discuss it further. Okay, good. Then in that case, would, does anyone have any other? You know, questions or should we hear a motion to? Endorse this plan as approval not required?
The move.
Second.
Any, any other, do we need any discussion on this? Does anyone have any? I'll just, you know, note. That the plan does not show a subdivision and. Does not appear to violate any. Shootsbury zoning. And just, you know, just a quick look at Google Maps. I'm also just kind of confirming Lake Drive and. Oakdale Drive are do appear there, so I think I think we're okay. Alright, I will. Call the roll. Raymond?
Yay.
Pycroft?
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
Take care of.
Hi.
And I'm an I. Okay, thank you, everyone. I will. Endorse this and. Reach out to the applicant and make sure they get their copy of it. Probably with the help of Carrie. As needed. Alright. The next item on our agenda is. Wheelock Annual Report. And Michael has asked that this be put on the agenda, so I am going to. Go ahead and say, take it away, Michael, and let us know what you're thinking.
Basically, so the terms, the conditions of the special permit require that they submit an annual report. Forty-five days after the New Year, so February fifteenth is when it was due. The first three years of Wheelock, I don't think the planning board did any follow-up, and then I think the last two years we've gotten. Annual reports, if I remember correctly, last year we had some concerns about. Water in the retention basins and things like that, so we did a site visit in conjunction with the Concom. But I think just. For accountability's sake, we need to make sure that we do receive that annual report. And review it, and then, you know, based on that, if we have any questions, as it gets warmer, we could do a site visit if we want to, but. I think at this point, just getting the the paperwork in and reminding them. I remember a few months ago, we had talked about contacting them. I, my understanding is. The contact is now a guy who lives in Lunenburg for Nextera as opposed to the guy in Florida. But Jeff Lacy was the contact. So I don't, I guess the first question is, Nathan, if you know if we got anything? And if we didn't get anything, we should, someone should follow up and get that report.
Well, I'll. Just quickly note that I do believe that that visit was probably. The year before last.
Okay.
Just, you know, you might have missed it. Maybe even the year before that. I'm not, you know, it's twenty twenty-four, eleven. Might have been all the way back in twenty twenty-one. So. But don't quote me on that date.
It's all a blur.
Yeah, and then Ashley, go ahead if, I think you.
Yeah, Nathan had me reach out to them, and you're gonna have to remind me because I can do a search in my email. And I don't think they responded. What's the, am I looking for Nextera? Is that who I?
Yeah.
Yeah, so whenever, I don't know if it was two or three meetings ago, you asked if I would take that on, and I did. Send them an email, and I'm just gonna. I'm gonna do a search and see if they've gotten back to me. I don't think they have.
I think on Tuesday, November eighth.
Yeah, so.
I'm gonna forward you an email.
I have.
You you received the email.
Yeah, here's the draft. Yeah, so then I sent it. That was November thirteenth. I'm digging, so I don't know. You all, you all can talk and I'll dig and see if I can find anything, but I can certainly follow up with them. If they haven't gotten back to me. Or to us.
Looks like I I just found something. The last one in my email. Is, Nathan, you're correct, two thousand twenty-one, and Tim Garcia is the person who sent it. I don't know if he's still the contact or not.
Oh, so it's Spencer Woodward. And he got back to me. November twenty-eighth, and he said, thanks for the introduction. We'll update our contacts for the report distributions. And he wanted to know. About a decommissioning bond. Do you remember this, Nathan?
Yeah.
For the town of Shootsbury, and I'm not sure who the right contact with this for this would be.
It's a select board town administrator on that.
Right, and so, yeah, I sent that to them, and that's the last. So, yeah, I sent select board and town administrator. Email links to them, and that was Sunday, December tenth. And that's all. That's the last time. That we heard from them. So when I initially reached out to them, I just introduced myself and said that I'm. Establishing a point of contact related to Wheelock. Previously, you were communicating with Jeff Lacy, and he resigned. And we look forward to receiving the twenty twenty-three special use permit. On Wheelock from Nextera. And I'm happy to coordinate any future site visits. And he didn't. He said, thanks for the introduction. We'll update our contacts for report distributions and. Then asked that question about the decommissioning bond, which I have no idea what that is, but I imagine you all know.
If they just commission, decommission it and leave and have it standing there, we have to have the money to take it down.
I see. So should I follow up? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I mean. If you're, if you're generally asking, I would say, yeah, I mean. We sort of need them to give us an annual report if we wanna sort of close the loop and have them comply with the terms of the special permit.
Yeah, because it's been, it's been forty-five days. Yeah, right. Should I remind them of that? We're supposed to get a report forty-five days after the New Year. Okay. Okay. Will do.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, Ashley. Alright. Anything else on that? Is there anything else on that? I don't think so. Okay, I think we'll move on. Next is general bylaw for. I, yeah. EES or ESS, is it? Electric Stores System? I might have wrote EES and then wrote an acronym for ESS, so. Figure that one out.
If if it's okay, I'd sort of like to flip them for flow. And sort of go from what might be perceived as less complicated to more complicated. Is that?
Yeah, yeah. You wanna do the miscellaneous amendments, associate.
Yeah.
With the permits first?
Yeah, exactly. So I'll share my screen, just. That was dumb, I clicked the wrong button. Oh, Carrie, can you let me share?
Yeah, sorry, I was a little slow with it.
So. All three of these, you guys got. The updated version, and I'll just say on the front end. I really appreciate the feedback. Special call out to Keith, who did some ma- major. Reading and thoughtfulness providing, mostly in the ESS one, but. You know, Jeff Weston provided comments and Steve did as well, which is great. So in this one, this is sort of the. This miscellaneous amendments, and there shouldn't be much new in a lot of these, but. Up here, this is Jeff just had a. Correction here about capitalizing the M, so that was straightforward, but.
Well, are we supposed to be looking at the draft ESS? Because right now we're looking at the agenda.
Really? That's not what I'm looking at. Hold on a second. Sorry, that would facilitate. Uh, let's see. Two, 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 two. How's that?
That's better.
Okay, cool, great. So this first up on top, just. Jeff had suggested making this a capital M. That seems like a reasonable thing. There was, Jeff had a question about this language here about the associate member. As, and. I had this, I checked with the legislators, who then in turn checked with the. Council for the legislature to make sure that we had the wording right. I didn't want us to be voting on something that wasn't appropriate, so. This is the wording that got the thumbs up from the council for the legislature, so. And that's basically just affirming. That our home rule petition about associate members. Will. Be enacted. Right now, the the law got changed, but we have to change our bylaw to say that we want to adopt that. The review criteria is where we had a lot of the conversation and comments the last time. And one of the things that folks rightly said is that there was some duplicative. Language, so I tried to make it less. Duplicative in that regard, and so some of the wording. Is, well, it's, this is, it's different in terms of public health, welfare, and safety up here, and then. The comments about environmental concerns are in the second one, so. I think with this, I only changed a little bit, this with respect to someone in the comment. And then farther down, the blue is the stuff that's changed between last meeting and now. So sort of minimal until you get to down here. And this is where I tried to sort of. Make it a little less. Duplicative, a little bit better organized, so that you are reading it. There was some language in the previous version, like if you look at bottom, damage to lakes and streams. That got captured elsewhere. So that's that, those changes there. I think Keith, you might have been the person, I can't remember at this point, who suggested severability, or it was Donna. But have we added severability? And the idea, oh, it was Donna, I think, because she said if any of these things. In the criteria didn't withstand Attorney General. Scrutiny that, just make it explicit that although the entire zoning bylaw has severability, putting it in here. And then I just. Fine-tune this to basically say that if we were to. Do the the minimus approval, that it would be approving it in the same manner that a special permit. Is required. So those are the changes there, so not dramatic. Anyone have any? Comments or suggestions? And I guess I would say the hope is for all of these three, like we talked about last time. That for the two that are zoning amendments, we can bring it forth for a hearing on April eighth. So my thought is, if there's any tweaks tonight, I can make them. And. We have some kind of agreement so that we can sort of move forth and make sure that they're posted. In in time for people to see them before hearing. So that's sort of. I think what the process could be. So, any thoughts on?
I have a question. I have a question about twelve C. And it says. It's probably just fine how it is, but especially in areas designated by Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'm just wondering, like, designated as what? Is it? Bio? You know?
Well, yeah, I mean, I was trying to capture that whole big clump of stuff, you know, so there's all these different designations, biomat being one of them. It's a great question, and a good catch. I think it's, it's related to the. Yeah, it's the wildlife habitats. And, you know, the. Yeah, it's the the wildlife habitats and the, you know, the forest ecology, et cetera. Um, do you have a suggestion? To make it a little bit crisper?
I don't know. I mean, it might. It might be repetitive, but to it just, it feels like it just ends and it's very general.
Like if we just took this, took that out?
I don't know about that. More like, should you add to it and say as biomap or as critical wildlife habitat or?
Um, I could, I don't think I. I could do including, I think is probably more appropriate in this sense.
Especially in errors. Including.
Oh, as, okay, yeah, no, that you're right. Oh, those are included biomap. It's really.
Biomap.
Yeah, I mean, there's other ones that are designated, but that's sort of the the key one.
I also, you know, I don't know so much about this, but I know um sometimes it's better to be more general. Because then you're not wrong.
Exactly. Ah, Keith is raising his hand. I was just gonna say Keith and Tom and.
I I finally found the button. Hey, uh, up twelve A, back to uh. Our discovery of. Public versus private drinking water supplies in town.
Yeah.
We do technically. Have public drinking water wells. Maybe that that twelve A where it says especially affecting private drinking water wells. Either. Leave it just drinking water wells or public or private or public and private drinking water wells.
Okay, that's a good catch.
I get mixed up is. Is that effecting or affecting?
Oh, I, that's one of the ones I hate.
I I think it's affecting, but I wouldn't bet a whole lot of money on it. Tom.
Tom may know.
Yeah, that that would be the A.
Okay. It's a team effort here. I love it. Cool. And does anyone have suggestions on uh? What Ashley was suggesting in terms of C?
Does it make sense to say as biomap? I that doesn't.
No, it's 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 sort of. Doesn't, I mean, it it could include that, but it the way I just wrote it doesn't work.
Is there like a an adjective that we could use? Before areas, especially in something areas? Or just? In designated areas or? It might be fine as it is, but I. This sounds a little abrupt.
You could say especially in areas designated as such. By the Commonwealth.
Ah, there you go.
Brilliant.
Yes.
Cool.
Are there designations for all those categories? Like is forest ecology a designation?
It not as not not as far as ecology, but in terms of forested areas that are. Critical to for preservation, so they don't have.
I guess that doesn't exclude anything there at only. Okay, I just wanted to make sure it didn't exclude anything.
Yeah.
I get it.
Cool. That was good.
You know, that 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 could be problematic cuz, yeah, you know, destruction of uh. Wetlands, you know, the the state could have something designated wetlands, so it's like a little bit. Um. Yeah.
It wasn't there originally, so we could just take it out.
I would almost uh say take it out, yeah. Um. Make sure you get that uh comma replaced with a period.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, I I apologize, Michael, cuz I I haven't. Really. Had time to go through and. You know, come up with uh any edits if I would have them, but you know, I've been thinking about this a little bit and. You know, I realize part of this is, you know, existing, right? And you're just adding to existing things, but I was. I was thinking about this, uh, you know, general findings and. And then, you know, specific findings. And I was wondering if it's. You know, quite quite a a high bar for a decision by the planning board. So. You know, for each of these points, the planning board would have to, you know, come up with a finding that, you know, it that meets these uh criteria. And. You know, this is something. That the applicant would uh not not likely challenge. But. If we don't do a. A very good job uh with these findings and. You know, so another stakeholder other than the applicant decided to challenge our decision. Then it could be uh. A a vulnerability of sorts. You know, I. I haven't really done this this part of the process very much. You know, we did do the special permit uh recently and. You know, I don't know that uh we would have. I don't know how thoroughly we went through this list when we did that.
Yeah, well, I guess two things. One is that, you know, Donna sort of supported this approach. Um, so that's sort of how we started on this path. Um, but I think, you know. Going the other way is to just have to be vague, and I think then you you open yourself up as well cuz you'd be missing things. Um. We don't need to provide. You know, scientifically documented. Evidence of these things. It's just a matter, we have to address them. So when you write up the findings, it's going through and saying one, two, three, four, five. Um, a a lot of these additional ones are really sort of for industrial level, you know, for a residential. There's, you know, they they won't be applicable, and I think that would be the answer. Um, you know, it's like looking at ten. Um. For residential, there's not gonna be substantial financial legal liability, so you could just say not applicable. Um.
Right. I guess that's uh that's true.
I'll help you if you have to do the conditions since I'm making it a longer list.
All right.
So with this, if.
There's a good chance you you won't be helping me at all if uh, you know, if any of the. Special permit applications for non-residential uses we get are uh related to uh. Uh, solar energy.
Oh, that's true. That's true, Keith. Should I go back down?
No, you're. Hey, um, so back back um. They're just on my, so the one uh ba 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 will not create. Uh.
This one?
Go, will not, oh, number eleven, will not create increased risk. To the public health, safety, well, is there a way to say will not create? Uh, instead of increased risk, cuz lots of things create increased risk, but it's de minimis.
Right.
So could it be? Will not create. Unreasonable risk again or?
Hey, or it could be significant, but that's all, you know.
Significant or excessive, yeah, I don't know, but just I making it.
Yeah.
Concrete like that. Yeah, just some kind of wiggly word, even though.
Yeah.
Hate that.
You hate them. Yes, I uh, we're in the same camp. It's it's a weird irony.
Yeah.
Will not create unacceptable risk.
There you go, that sounds much better. Yeah.
Love it. This. I would say this is where the geeky me comes out. It's really fun having all of these minds working together. Um, so, thank you. Any other thoughts or? So I would suggest, cuz we basically, I'm gonna pull this one down for a minute. Uh. So if this makes sense, Nathan, I I would say that. Well, it's either we we just don't vote on it and we move it, you know, we we agreed it. I guess what this is the vote, the motion I would make is that we move to. Accept this version to post for consideration for public hearing. Um, cuz we're not approving it. We're really just sort of making it available and then after public hearing, we would then vote to. Bring it to town meeting. So the two things we would do now is. Post it for public hearing and send it to the select board for so they can see it. Um. And for for those who are new to this process, it's a little weird with zoning bylaws because what happens is that. The planning board holds the public hearing, but we're required to send it to the select board for them to put their eyeballs on it. But they don't, they don't even vote on it. They just see it. Uh, and that's essentially because the select board owns the town warrant for town meeting. So when I was on the select board, we would get these things. And it would sort of be like, okay, great, next agenda item. Um, but we do have to send it to them, so it's on their agenda, so um. If you want, I can make the motion, just this is in my head, unless someone else wants to try to do it. Um, Nathan, you have an opinion?
Um. No, yeah, I I mean, I think that uh. You know, so we would uh just, you know, we could have a motion to, yeah, to uh. Move forward with the uh. A hearing on this, uh, you know, as at during the meeting, right?
Yeah, I think it's two things. Move to move forward on this this version to public hearing and to send this a copy to the select board. So those are the, so those are the two things that we would be doing at this point.
Yeah, no, that sounds uh reasonable to me. Maybe, I mean, I don't, I mean. Yeah, yeah, that's 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 great.
Okay, so moved.
Seconded. Okay, any uh? Any discussion?
I have a question. This is. This would ultimately end up being a special town meeting, right? Like it's too, we would get it in by April. Okay.
Yeah, the plan, the plan that we just discussed last time was. If if we're voting to move this to a public hearing, then Carrie will have enough time. To post it for an April eighth, which is our next scheduled meeting, and that would be the public hearing. And then it's a few weeks after that for town meeting, but it's. Usually the bigger crunch is the note, they have to do two successive notices. Prior to the public hearing, so we have enough time for that if we do it now. Um, and then after the public hearing, all we have to do is. Um, do a a report from the committee to town meeting, which can be a written or an oral one. Um, so we do have time for regular town meeting.
Um. And that report gets the uh, gets the items on the agenda?
Um. Sending it to the select board gives a gives them a heads up that we want it on the agenda. That's sort of, that's the trigger.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's all right, very good. Um. I will, any other comments, discussion? I'll call the roll. Raymond?
Hi.
Hi, Croft.
Hi.
Take care.
Hi.
Weston?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Okay.
Thank you all for that one. Um, so the next one I'll do is the lighting one. Um, and just, we've all seen these before, so. The color coding is just to differentiate what we've discussed. Um. So with this one, I think, let's see, we're in February. I think we talked about this in December. Um. Donna looked at it and had a couple of suggestions that she wanted me to add. Um, so the only thing here is. Stuff in blue that has been added since we had the last conversation in December. I'll I'll backtrack to this background for a minute, but. Um. Donna wanted to get more specific in terms of. Some take the terms of low intensity lighting and. I think it was something else before, but warm temperature lighting um to get it more specific, so it was clear what that was. Uh, the edit here is from Jeff. Um, so eight hundred lumens and below. Initially, I was trying not to get into the weeds cuz the, as I researched the. The specs around lighting are really specific, and I think for most people, you you know. Your eyes start crossing and really, at least my intent was to keep it, you know, friendly and clear as opposed to highly technical. Um, but Donna had asked to put this in, so I tried to achieve that with. What she was asking. Um. Donna had also suggested, she said, do you want to address lighting of flags or monuments? Um, and so. I thought this was a a pretty simple way to address it, just say that uh the nighttime illumination of flags or monument not consistent with the requirements. This bylaw shall be prohibited, so we're not creating any new categories, we're just calling that out. Um. And then this is, the next two things are things for us to discuss. Um. Enforcement's tricky. I think we talked about it last time, you know, that one could have the building inspector inspector be the enforcer, but the reality is. The building inspector who's shared by multiple towns and works for FERC is not gonna come out in the middle of the night to see what the lighting situation is. Um, and in doing reading. You know. Oftentimes, this is among neighbors, so it's, I don't, I don't, I've never seen a bylaw that actually says this first sentence. But it seems like. There's no harm in saying that people should talk to each other first. Um, and then. Bring it to the select board, um, which struck me so. The worst part of being on the select board for me and I think many others is that you listen to dog hearings. It's not sort of why you sign up for select board, but you, the select board is who listens, is the arbiter for dog hearings. And this, you know, those are highly emotional neighbor to neighbor kind of things, and it seemed like this is in that same category. Um. And I don't think I'm running for select board again, so it's fine to have them do it. Um. So that's how I sort of got to to them being the body as opposed to the, you know, you could, you could also. Have the police do it. Uh, I think that's sort of. Ups the ante a little bit, although going to the select board, the select board can figure out who, you know. Who follows up staff wise, you know, it could be the police chief taking a visit, which was what happens in dog hearings. It could be the town administrator. Um, it could just happen to select board meeting and something gets decided. Um, so that's sort of one conversation, and then I'll just mention this other one. We can do both. So there's two ways to do the effective date. So the straight on normal way would be on April twenty-seventh, when we have town meeting. That everything then and after would have to comply and everything prior um. Would be exempt unless there was significant improvements in the property. What Antucket did is they wanted to have it come up just um a standard for everybody, but they gave them a window. Um, and so I basically took that approach as well, which is to say within three years of town meeting. All all light fixtures um should conform. You know, there's. Sort of practicality and politics involved in that. Um. The, if it's just effective as a town meeting, anyone who's got anything in place doesn't have to worry. Because they're not affected, so it's sort of an easier vote. There's less people who might feel like, you know, they're getting. Ding for something. Um. The other one means that everyone has to comply, but creates a a period of time to do that. So those are the two, those are the two questions. I guess it would be helpful to sort of get board feedback on. And the red right there, the parties that are affected is Jeff Weston's edits.
I see Keith has his hand up. Is that a legacy hand from last time or? No, no, it's it's a real one. Um. And it was actually from back at the 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 monuments and flag poles.
Oh, okay.
A, although this one you're on is much more interesting. Um. Uh. And I, again, I don't know if there's anybody in town that keeps a flag lit all night. I think the US flag code is if you fly the the American flag at night, it has to be lighted. For flag etiquette or whatever. Again, I don't know that has any. But there may be diehard folks in town. I don't know if anybody, if that would apply to anybody or not, but. Um. That's something to keep in mind. There may be, there may be concern about that.
That's actually why I wrote it the way I did, which it doesn't say that you can't light it. It just has to be. In a manner.
Can't shine in somebody's window.
Yeah, and you know, it can't be like the the knee on how I. Yeah, and you know, it can't be like the, the neon halide kind of lights.
Yeah, I don't know what benefit there is to, to listing that, but. I mean, I guess saying that, you know, uh.
And I didn't say we had to, she just said you might want to consider it, so I thought I'd put it in there, because she's been around the block a little bit.
Yeah, and you don't know what might come down the pipe.
Did you send this to her afterwards?
No, she just, she just said you might want to address it, it seemed like this is a very.
Could, because she might have been thinking something like, you know, and nothing in this bylaw is to be, you know. Uh, for the purpose of prohibiting the lighting of uh. In monuments.
No, that, no, that was, she, she and I talked a little bit about it, but it was, that was definitely not the intent.
Okay. Yeah, um. And Tom has his hand up too.
Hi, um, it's not about the flag pole, it's okay to go to the enforcement one. I had a question or two, to help me a little bit, and maybe a suggestions, I don't know. Um, are, or is it fair to say that the affected parties are the same thing as the complainant and the property owner? And if they are, would that be more specific language?
It, you know, I, I can't think of a scenario where it wouldn't be, but I think getting back to sort of. Something Ashley and Keith said earlier, like, you know, the less, sometimes less specific, there might be some weird thing where. I mean.
I just wondered how it would come onto the radar, um. Any town board, like the planning board or. Right, whoever, uh, unless a complaint were made, so it would seem it would be that party. And the party who owns the light.
Yes.
I just wanted to know if that's a fair. Equivalency, or if there are other affected parties that. Are known to exist or just that might exist.
I, it's, it's, it's a good suggestion, I don't know, what do other people think?
Well, it, it is a. Somewhat reasonable, I think, um, you know, complaining in the, uh, is there not, um. We, a landowner sounds right, you know, could be a, uh. You know, a, a leasing.
Should be included, but I don't know if the owner. Supersedes the tenant.
I mean, there could, there, you know, it's a. That's getting into potentially complicated legal questions, if there was a, uh, like a lease agreement that stipulated that the tenant, you know, mu- you know, must, uh. Comply with all, you know, zoning or anything, you know, not, you know, not doing anything to break the laws, I don't know if the, uh. Obviously, you know, if you have a, if you're a property owner in town and, you know, there's a. Bylaw, zoning bylaw violation on your property, uh, you know, it may be difficult to just kind of completely, uh. You know, say, well, that's not my responsibility, I'm renting that, uh, land out. I have a tenant that's responsible for that.
We also, also might have a landowner where there's no one residing on the land.
Right. Well, I mean, that, that's fine and dandy, and I mean, if, if, you know. You can find out who the, the landowner is and their address of record with the assessor's office. Um, but yeah, if there was like a tenant situation, uh, that could potentially complicate things. Uh, that, that's my only concern with that language. So, uh, is there, is there like, uh, an opposite number to complainant?
Well, it does say if a lighting offense may exist, so it's putting it in that context. You know, there's, there is a problem and there's affected parties. I feel like it's okay that way. Cause that's inclusive. It's not, you know, it could be a tenant, it could be. Uh, a, a stable where there's animals that's owned by somebody that doesn't even live on the property or. Any other situation. My thoughts, I think the way that it's, it's worded is okay.
That helps, I was just, I couldn't figure out exactly what the parties would be. Could I ask another question about the same sentence, about the discussion?
Sure.
Would it be, um. I wondered what the thought is, if the thought is that this discussion would have already happened before. The offense may exist phase, or is this something that would be imposed? And would it be voluntary or would it be moderated? So I wondered about a voluntary moderated discussion. That, you know, people have the opt out is. Or do they have an opt out like to that part? Um, can it skip to the next step? Um, just, I didn't know how that discussion would be structured, expected to be structured.
Uh, that's a good point, because you might have two parties that really, uh, there might be some real animosity that you don't want to put them together.
Yeah, I don't, I don't get, I mean, what I was thinking was that. It's. I, on that level, it's sort of, you know. You all talk to each other, and if they can't talk to each other, then it does go to the select board, so. You know, if they can't get along, I don't, I don't think we could, um. Provide guidance in how people talk to each other in this, you know, through a bylaw context. You know, what I was imagining is if I was. On the select board and two people came before and someone said, you know, the light's shining in my bedroom, I can't go to sleep, blah, blah, blah. The first question that would be asked is, have you talked to each other and tried to resolve it? Um, and so, and if they said no, the first order of business would be. Go have a conversation, then come back next month and report on what happened, um, so it's mostly trying to enforce that. And how that happens upon the two of them, it might be amiable, it might be not, I think you can come back the next meeting and say. You know, so and so didn't want to talk to me, and that. That's sort of, you know, that means the conver- the discussion did not resolve the issue, um, so that was how I was imagining it.
Yeah, so maybe, what about instead of, because, or if a lighting offense may exist. The first level enforcement, so. Maybe if we could word that first part as if. If a lighting offense may exist and the parties cannot resolve. Through discussion. And then have it go to. Whoever's next, select board.
Right.
You know, I, maybe we could just do a separate section before enforcement that says, uh. You know, dispute resolution, you know, the town does encourage neighbors that, uh. You know, I, you know, the, the, the town does encourage, um. People, uh, to attempt to resolve this, uh, resolve any. Issues that may constitute a violation of this bylaw. Privately before. You know, uh, pursuing a, uh, formal, uh, enforcement.
That was good. What'd you say, before pursuing a what?
Be- before pursuing formal enforcement. And I had another thought on enforcement, which is that, uh. You know, there's several. Sections in the bylaw, um. That say. Something like, you know, the plan is not approved, like a permit is not issued. Uh, if any violation of the bylaw. Or, or, you know, if anything on the parcel exists that violates the bylaw. Right? So that would. Mean that if, uh, someone is applying for. Anything, uh, any kind of, uh, permit or anything like that. If there's a violation of the lighting byla- bylaw that could prevent them from proceeding with that. But not all. Applications for permits come to a board, right, you know, building permits are just issued, um. You know, it could be a building permit for a shed, right, um, so.
Well, I think the relevancy there would be if the plans had. Lighting that was inappropriate.
Well, the relevancy would be if I have lights on my property that are bothering my neighbor. And then, you know, nothing happens, right, you know, like this like, you know, let's just. But then, you know, uh. Next year, you know, with nothing having been done to, uh, fix that lighting situation, you know, I'd go to the building inspector for a permit. To build a shed or something, you know, trivial. Or, or to any, you know, any kind of site plan review or any kind of, uh. You know, board approval, right, you know, you say. You know, I need this. They, you know, in theory, you could say, all right, well, you know, you've got a zoning violation on account of your lights. So you can't, you know, we're not going to issue any permits or approve anything until you address that. But then the question is, all right, well, how would anyone know if there was a zoning violation?
Yeah, I mean, I, my general take on this is this is sort of. Establishing norms and expectations, I, you know, the whole policing of it is.
Well, right, I mean, that's, that's exactly it, the policing of it does get tricky. Um, and, you know, like I said, I did not, um, I just. Fortunately, was, wasn't able to do deep dives on some of this stuff like I wanted to, but, uh. You know, just kind of. I mean, this just seems to me like an example of where, you know, if, if any of those situations where. You know, you don't get what you want if you got a, a zoning violation. On your property, like, you know, like if you built. Your own garage and it's, you know, within twenty five feet of the side lot line, right, and then you go to. Maybe, you know, after the fact, act for act, ask for a permit for it or, or, or something else, you know, you, uh. You know, there, there, there's provisions that are already in our bylaw that say, you know, you can't do it if, if you don't have a, if, if you're violating the bylaw. And I, I don't know what they all are, I just know I've seen that language in there. Um, and that, you know, I apologize for kind of, you know, having this kind of lackluster approach, but it seems to me that. Basically, what I'm getting at is, you know, give the. Put into something simple, like if there's a, you know, the, the planning board should have the ability to determine that. A violation exists of this bylaw.
Do you want it to come to the planning board?
Well, or, you know, maybe somebody, um.
It seems like, I mean, that, the way this is structured is that. Most, I mean, it, it's a, going to the select board is a high bar for most people in terms of complaining, so if someone wants to complain, they're going to do it, but most people will not. Um, and they'll either say it's tolerable, I can live with it, you know, I'll put curtains up. Or, you know, I don't want to give my neighbor a hard time, so I'd rather not go to the select board and I'll change the light bulb, you know, it's like. I, it's. But. I don't know, I think we're. It shouldn't come to the planning board, I think that's, it's way too. Formal, and I don't think, I don't feel like it should go to the police, that seems like a bad vibe for Shitsbury.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's, uh. Yeah, no, I, I was just trying to, uh. Not so much set up a process for it to come to the planning board, but just give the planning board the ability to, uh. Or, or any, you know, the planning board or the zoning board or the select board, really, it would make sense to be able to. Make that determination, so, you know, anytime, you know, any board gets one of those applications. Um, or the building inspector, right, uh, you know, they could take that into consideration, um. And withhold approval for, uh. You know, for a zoning, a, a, a lighting zoning violation. So, but it's just kind of saying, you know, the idea is to try and say, like, you know, if you have a light by, a lighting violation, you know, you're not going to get your building permit. Or, or whatever other permit you need.
Are you suggesting the building inspector? Should be able to waive? A violation, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I'm suggesting that, uh. You know, any. Any, any. Any town issued permit, uh. You know, can be withheld, um, if a violation of this bylaw exists on, uh, exists, um, where they, uh. On the property where the permit is being issued.
Building related permit.
I mean.
Not, not like a dog license.
Right, no, not like a dog license and probably not something like a well or a septic either, I suppose. Although, you know, maybe, but, uh, you know, I don't really like that. I don't know, I mean, you know, that's. Like I said, you know, I don't really have this as a. Such a polished thing, I'm, I'm, you know, it's kind of lakes for the party and ill prepared unfortunately, but.
Uh, Robert, I guess what's coming up for me is. Why bring it up at all? A violation, uh, of a lighting, a bylaw is, uh. Is the business of the building inspector, and I don't think you have to pass a provision to, uh, specify that. So, uh. Leaving it would be my, uh, preference, I think.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's fair, I guess.
How does it work with dogs?
Oh.
How do, how does the enforce, like if someone has a complaint and it's, you know, and it comes before the select board, what's the protocol to get it there?
Uh, we actually have a town dog officer. Um, and so the complaint goes to the dog, usually it goes to the police. And then the police show up and then they say, hey, we have a, a dog officer, the dog officer gets involved, and then it's usually the dog officer and the police. Who talked to the party, talked to the complaining neighbor, um. Do some research, if, at some point it can go to the select board, um.
Okay.
I think when I was on select board for three years, we probably had. At least two different cases, one of them came back to the select board repeatedly, um. So, but it's a select board that makes the decision, and it's anything from do nothing to kill the dog and everything in between. Um, literally, I mean, that's, it's. So I think it's up to the select board, you know, that they can, there is that wiggle room, if the select board can say. There's a reasonable middle ground here, um, you know, I, I think that's sort of. Um, you know, ultimately, the idea is, can we create some expectations and also have a process where, you know, we can remain neighborly as opposed to litigious? Um.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to strike the balance on.
Right, and obviously it's a different situation because it's a safety issue with dogs, but, and we have a dog officer. Is, no, I'm, I. Um, I, I agree with Robert to a certain extent that. I think just stating, just having the bylaw is a tool of enforcement in itself, because if somebody does have. An issue with their neighbor and the lighting and whatever, they can look at the bylaw and maybe they would come before the planning board, much like. Whoever that woman was that started all this and just say, does something like this exist, is there anything that can be done? And we could say, oh, there's a bylaw, why don't you check it out? You know, and, um, but I understand the need to have something for enforcement as well. Um, I like the idea of saying we encourage residents to resolve. Issues by, you know, um, referring to this bylaw and seeing if there's. Any violations, and if issues can't be resolved, then yeah, I guess it's got to go to somebody else. Ha- have you talked to the select board about this?
Seen it yet. So.
Okay.
Uh, we'll see what happens, but. He's just got his hand up.
Yeah, when you talk the, the dog issue, is that dog like a menacing dog or barking dog?
Both.
Is, is there a noise or, do we have a noise bylaw? Cause there was a rooster issue too, wasn't there?
Yeah, no, we don't have a noise ordinance.
Okay. It's kind of the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean. I, I mean, one of the issues is the dog barking in the backyard, because the person would go off to work and leave the dog in the backyard.
You know, there's remedies in the, uh, general, in the bylaw that say, uh, you know, uh, the board of selectmen or building inspector, if authorized. You know, may, uh, take, uh, any lawful action deemed necessary to prevent a remedy or violation. Um, fines. So on and so forth, so, uh. You know. Maybe we should just add something that, uh, you know, um. Section, uh, ten point two. Shall also apply be applicable.
Yeah, there's got to be some kind of just boilerplate language that would kind of.
Well, yeah, that's that's what's in the.
Yeah.
For section ten point two. Um, has all that. So, uh. Shall shall, uh, shall also be applicable.
Cool.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay. So how about this other part? The effective date. Should it be April seven, twenty seventh? Moving forward or should it be give people a few years to come into compliance?
Does anyone know if there's any, uh, existing violations?
What do you mean? Oh, for lighting?
Yeah.
Sun Levert Road no longer has floodlights. That's probably the was the most obvious one. You know, they were doing it when they were building. I think since they've moved in, they've taken them down. I don't, I'm I'm not aware of any.
Yeah.
Um, Michael, if your question on eight, twelve, six is. Which of the two alternatives? I would favor the first, I. Uh, then Nantucket approach. For me is, uh, is too much, uh. And probably largely unenforceable.
That is probably a correct assessment.
I agree with Robert. I think it'll make it more palatable to people as well and. Give people a little bit less to be upset about if they're going to get upset about this if we're. Not also telling them they have to change things. And it also could become, um, a cost to people to have to replace their light bulbs or their fixtures or whatever. And that could be a problem for some people.
Well, and just having this bylaw and bringing attention to it may. Because I suspect a lot of people have never even given this one second of thought and. It may be almost self correcting. You know, if there are, people may reconsider the lights they have.
Yeah, I I I like the Nantucket approach, but, uh. You know, just kind of, I don't know, it it just gives a. I guess there's something out there that does cause a problem and gives us a way to potentially deal with it, but, uh, Robert's probably right. It's probably unenforceable. I'm not sure how, uh. How much you can change thing, you know, the bylaw for something exists, a zoning bylaw for something that's existing.
I remember in town meeting, um, actually, I remember the name, I won't mention him. Um, concerned about having to spend money to modify what he had already done. Um, because of a possible new law, so that was, um, a kickback for that, a kickback for that change, so. That person probably would be much happier with the effective date and that way he wouldn't have to spend money on changing things. Um, I think it had to do with, um. Um, something like. Changing anything within a hundred feet of a vernal pond and he was concerned of, um, violations of, um. If the law was changed, then he had to, um, retrofit things that he had done before. So I think there will be less kickback, certainly, if there's an effective date.
But it sounds like there's. Consensus on this one. Um, and Tuck it might have nice beaches, but it doesn't work for us for lighting. So.
Yeah, what do what do they say? Choose your battles? I don't know. That's the. Battle we need to choose.
Yeah, I I would agree. Um, I put it in there just because it was intriguing and I wanted us to at least. The just the do what we just did, um. So with any other thoughts on this? Do you want to, we wrap this one up, move to the ESS or the, as Nathan calls it, the E S? By law? Cool, so I'll take this down, so. I will move. To. Um. Advance this version of the lighting bylaw to public hearing and to send it to the select board, um. As appropriate.
Second.
Person. I'll call the rule. Raymond.
I.
Weston.
I.
Highcroft.
I.
Take care of.
I.
And I'm an I.
So the last one, um. And I I just want to say, I really do appreciate all the thoughtful discussion on this stuff. It's. It's really, I appreciate it, um. Let's see, hold on, I thought I was getting this all queued up to share. Um, yeah, that's. Here we go, okay. Um. So this one. I don't think, actually, let me just check one quick thing. I'm pretty sure. This will get the right version, um, but I just. I queued it up and I'm just second guessing myself.
At the first page, Michael.
No, I know, I'm just, I just want to see, uh. Hold up, stop sharing for a sec. Sorry. Um. Yes, that is, okay, that was the right one, so let me get it up there again. Um. So this one benefited by a lot of. Steve Russell has some comments and then, like I mentioned earlier, Keith did a lot of, um. Rewordings and making things a little more clear. And raise some issues that we added in, so. I didn't do the color coding on this one because it, um. Hopefully you guys got to read it, um, because there's just a lot of changes, but. In terms of. Some of the things that we added, I'm just gonna. Bruce through, um, a lot. Keith, you can help me with things that you called out. A lot of it was just making it more clear. There was this. Keith had made the point that a lot of the stuff was in terms of. Battery related storage. There might be non battery related storage coming down the pike. It's not commercially available yet, so. We just put it in there as a placeholder, um. We had, we added severability at the end was an addition. And, oh, the other, the other part was right here. Um, some of the background about lithium ion storage, this background here was at the beginning. And Keith had pointed out that, um. The background really should be about energy energy storage at the outset, like the sort of the intro intro. Uh, and then I didn't want to, I thought this was relevant, so I just moved it down to the lithium ion. Battery section, um. What else is there that? Was new? Yeah, this is the severability part that we put in. But. Um, a lot of it was just sort of making things more clear, reorganizing them a little bit, but Keith, is there stuff that you wanted to share? If you have your notes there?
I I don't have my notes with me, but no, I think I think what you put, you put together like a really good. Skeleton and it was all I did was. Again, may maybe a little bit of organization and clarity stuff, but I think everything was pretty much in there.
Hmm.
Um. I don't, I don't remember adding anything.
Okay. Okay, anyone have any thoughts if you've. Reread it? Um, I mean substantively, as as you said, the the orientation didn't shift. It was. Making sure that it was crisper, that we included a couple of concepts that were not there, um. But, and this one is different, that it will not be a zoning bylaw, so it'll be a general ordinance, which means that. Um. It'll be. Going to the select board for the select board to put on the warrant. Um, they don't have to do a public hearing, I I my thought is it might be beneficial to do a public hearing. Um, and then the effect, there's no effective data, just. Exists so that. Everything's got to be in compliance with this. Um, so.
Uh, Michael, I went through it. Um, I didn't find any corrections. It's, um, incredibly, uh, incredibly well written, so thank you for all of your efforts.
It looks like no one else is raising their hand, um. Should I take it down and we could just do the motion? Does that work for people? And, okay.
Yep.
Nathan, are you there?
I am here. I just figured. Taking off camera while you were discussing this general.
That's okay. I just didn't, oh, that's right, sorry, um.
Yes, it's quite all right.
I didn't, I didn't want to make a motion without, in case you had to step away.
I can, I can call a roll on this one.
Okay, so. I think I I'll move to, um. Have the planning board. Recommend. This is this general bylaw to the select board for, um. The warrant for town meeting for two thousand twenty four. Um, I think basically what we're doing is recommending. This so that they put it on, so and I guess I'll stop on my motion for a second, just sort of give background. I was going to share. General law on this, but basically. Warrant articles can come from different parties. To the select board, the select board, like I said earlier, owns the warrant, so they put things on, um. So like we've seen before, citizen petitions can get on, um, so you just need ten. For a regular town meeting, you need ten signatures from citizens. You can put a citizen petition on. The planning board, the ZBA, the Concom, like with the wetlands bylaw, they're the ones who sort of brought it to the select board. And then the select board puts it on the warrant article, on on the warrant, so what we would be doing is the planning board is basically recommending. That this go onto the warrant for town meeting, so that that would be the motion that I'm. I'm making if that's helpful, um. So I'll move the planning board recommend, um. The energy storage system general bylaw for placement on the two thousand twenty four warrant. Town meeting warrant.
Second.
Hey, Michael, I've got one question, but, um. So the 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 version you're going to send the select board now. Will Donna get a chance to look at it one more time or the select board make comments on it? I mean.
So Donna. Donna always looks at things again, um, and sometimes I wish she did it sooner than later, but, um, you know, we've had additions. On town meeting floor floor because she looked at it a few days prior to the meeting and caught something, even though she'd seen it two or three times, so. I'm highly confident that. She'll look at it and I think based on this, uh, if it makes sense, I could send it to her and say, this is what we recommended to the select board. I would assume the select board would also ask that question. Has Donna looked at this? And, you know, I guess I would. What I would say to the select board is Donna's reviewed it. She actually recommended this course of action, um, but she should look at it again because we can always tweak it.
And so it's it's true. And I'm a. Just talk here in in discussion, not about the, uh, this particular general bylaw, but just. That high level process, um. Yeah, I think, you know, you kind of touched on it, Michael, uh, there's. Boards that, you know, uh, individuals in in the town, I think there's lots of different avenues for getting a general bylaw, you know, on the town, on the warrant. But it goes to the select board because they own the warrant. Right? So in another, you know, by, you know, with this vote. For a general bylaw, the board is gonna. More or less endorse it as, uh, as is written and then it's going to be sent to the select board as, uh, you know, being endorsed by the planning board and. I presume that there are provisions in, uh, the general laws that provide that we can do that.
Yeah, and then if they were, you know, if they feel like we need to tweak something. Um, you know, based on Donna. I'm not clear if like they just do it or if they asked us to do it like that, I'm not very clear on that, but I think there's. Clearly an avenue for making changes if town council requires it or suggested.
Just so we don't get caught like the the wetland. Thing, snafu, um.
Always good to avoid that.
Yeah, I, uh, sorry, that's a. Is there any other further discussion? Okay, I I will, uh, call the rule. Raymond.
I.
Highcroft.
I.
Weston.
I.
Take care of.
I.
And I will abstain from this vote. Carrie.
Carrie.
Sorry, I just have a quick question. So since all three of the bylaw amendments are going to select board. When I'm drafting the, um, notice for the public hearing, are all three going to be discussed in one public hearing?
No, only two. The 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 first two that we did will be in the public hearing.
Okay.
And then the ESS one is up to the select board to decide if they want to do it.
Okay.
And we'll, uh, take special care to make sure we get that, um, notice right on the, uh, public hearing, whether or not it needs to be. Separate notices or or what, but we'll, we'll make sure we kind of, uh. Take a close look at that.
Okay, I've done this once. I think it was my first year and there's a, um, check sheet for it. Like, uh, to follow along. I haven't looked at it since, but I'll pull that up tomorrow.
And I think the only thing that. I would, I took away from the AG AG slapdown of, uh. The solar bylaw last year is that in the notice, we just want to make sure that. We have enough content there that people take away, you know, what the. Bylaws about coming into the public hearing, you know, sort of a balance because. All these things cost a lot of money, but, um, I think. The AG had made some side comment that, you know, it wasn't, there wasn't enough information in our notice. Um, for people to know what it was, so I think that's the only, we just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Okay. I'll start looking at it and drafting tomorrow, just so we can get it done as soon as possible and have it ready.
I appreciate that, Carrie.
Yeah, no problem.
Mary.
That's your question, Nathan, before we get Mary Lou. Do you want, in terms of the the ESS one? Would you like to send that to the select board? Would you like me to?
I I would, uh. Ask that you do it, yes. Uh, I mean, you know, you can, uh.
I'll see you, I I just.
Yeah, yeah, I I, yeah, but, um, you know, you should, uh. I would, I would designate you to, uh, represent the planning board in that matter.
And just so everyone knows, I'll put these on the on the website so that they'll be publicly available in the next couple of days for people to review, um, so.
Yeah, excellent. All right, Mary, Mary Lou. Are you trying to address the board?
I have a general question. I I I have a point of clarification per se. Um, perhaps Carrie may be able to answer me. I'm not sure, but I just sent an email to you, Nathan. And to you, Michael, as well as Carrie. They all bounced back and I'm curious what. Exactly, and if the planning board, other members know about this? And why that would have happened. Thank you.
Oh, that that could be, um. An issue with the email addresses you put in, uh, Mary Lou, if 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 that bounced back, then that's, uh. Nothing, nothing to do with us, um. So I would, I I know you've got some emails, uh. Already in there, so the the best thing may be to, uh. Do some copy and pasting out of those. I don't know if you do the, uh, the copy and pasting as much, but, uh. Just to make sure, you know, I can only. Conclude that if, uh, yeah, the email bounced back, that the email address that you entered was incorrect. Or there's some kind of serious issue with, uh, Google. Right now.
Okay, so Nathan, just quickly, I don't have, I don't use Google. Um, it's the same address I've been using forever, the eighteen years I've lived here. And, yeah, I'm just confused. Who would I speak to? And, yeah, I'm just confused. Who would I speak to? More than the planning board to find out about that? Michael, might you know?
About the email?
Yeah, yeah, just now at eight thirty something PM this evening. It, it, it all bounced back. It actually is saying, Carrie, I don't know if you know about email. Rejected. And I find that quite curious.
Does it say?
Do you have any attachment to the email?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any attachments?
No, it's just a straight email.
Does it say? That doesn't give any reason, it just says rejected? Is there anything else it says when it bounces back? Because usually when I have an email bounce back, it'll say like. Invalid email address or something along those lines.
Hmm, um, I would have to further look at it, but.
Usually it gives a reason why I won't send.
I'm sorry?
Usually it'll give a reason in the, when it says it's not sending, usually it'll explain why. In that email.
Very good. Is there any way I can speak with you, Carrie? To further clarify what happened?
Um, if you'd like to visit me during my office hours, I can try to take a look and help, but I can't guarantee I know what. Um, okay. Service you use.
I'll find that out. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Okay. What's next on our agenda here? We have minutes. We got to approve some minutes, I believe. Alright, so we have nine twelve, nine twenty-six and ten eighteen. I think we're out there. So, uh. Carrie, are you, uh? Or is anyone, uh? Prepared to talk about any of these?
I'm ready to move on them if you want me to.
All right. Why, why, why don't you do so, uh, Michael?
I'll move to approve the minutes of September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All right, any discussion? There's a select board meeting where we appointed. Ashley is a. Planning member. What is that sound?
Sounds like an air compressor.
I think it's coming from Jeff. But now that you're muted, you're good.
You're on notice, Jeff.
It's my furnace. I'm so sorry. Please forgive me.
All right, um, thanks, Jeff. I'm only kidding. All right, um. Okay, uh, I'll call a roll for a minutes of, uh, nine twelve, Raymond.
Aye.
Hi, Croft.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
Dickara.
Aye.
And I'm an I, okay. Nine twenty, so yeah, this, uh.
I'll move to approve minutes of September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second? Okay. All right, so, uh, discussion on this one, um. I, uh, Mike, I, I think I sent you an email, Michael, um. And I don't, I don't know, I don't think anything's subsequently gone out from this, but I believe that the, uh. The copy of the minutes I saw, um. Had our vote for appointing Keith Hasty. But there was, uh, we, we did take a vote. On, uh, Michael's motion to postpone. The discussion. Which I don't think made it into the minutes and I, you know, I apologize if I didn't, you know, kind of take enough steps to. Get that. So we may just have to. You know, I don't, uh. We could potentially, uh, throw that in right now, just to get it in there, because it is a, a vote that needs to be, you know, per open meeting law, needs to be recorded in the minutes. Um, so we don't need to, you know, go, you know, obviously there was, uh, we can kind of keep the summary of the discussion, uh, somewhat concise. But, uh, we do need to have something in there for that.
I appreciate that. I, I, I don't remember your email, but I think your. Recommendation makes sense that if Carrie can just say what the motion was and then what the vote. Was, that's probably sufficient.
I think. I saw an email saying that there was a motion missed, but I wasn't sure what it was, because I don't think I was at this meeting, so I was only going off the select word. Minutes, but, um, yeah, I can, I can go back and find it and put it. Chronologically where it was in the discussion of minutes.
What's, all right, so then we'll skip it and we'll just get then the next time.
That's fine.
All right. Would it make sense to, uh, withdraw, have, uh, at this point with the motion, a second, can Michael withdraw his motion or should we just, uh? Vote it down for now?
I, well, I would say since it was my motion, I'm, I'm happy to just sort of approve it with the anticipated amendment that. What? Would be included would be the motion and the vote. It's pretty straightforward. So. It would move things along. I'm okay with that, or I can withdraw it, whichever is easier. Your call.
Yeah, that, that's, uh. Yeah, that's, that's. Okay, so, uh.
I, I think it would basically, Carrie would just insert daycare move blah, 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 the, you know, the vote was.
Okay, yeah, all right, yeah, so we'll just, yeah, just the motion, the second and the, and the vote. All right, um. All right, um, I'll call the roll. Raymond.
Aye.
Ashley.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
Dickara.
Aye.
And I will vote aye on that as well. Okay. Yeah, great.
So I'll move to approve the minutes of October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Discussion. All right, I will call the roll. Hi, Croft.
Aye.
Raymond.
Aye.
Dickara.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
I'm an I. That's great. I'm glad to get caught up on some minutes. Makes me very happy.
That's why we're here.
Uh, uh, updates from Chair. Uh, what do I have? What do I have? I put this in as a catchall in case I forgot anything on the agenda. I almost forgot, uh. Posting entirely, so, uh. I've, I've got here that, uh, piece of paper that, uh, I had everyone sign. And it now has a, uh, book and page. In the, uh, Franklin County Registry. Of deeds. And that is, uh. Authorizing me to endorse, uh, plans on behalf of the board. Uh, when the majority of the board votes. So. Uh, just in time for this, uh, most recent ANR. Uh, Carrie, you have your hand up.
Uh, did you, did they give you like a receipt with the book and page number on it?
They did.
Do you think I can have a copy for the office?
I, uh. I certainly hope so, yes. And, and also, you know, I got to figure out reimbursement, because I did shell out one hundred five. Big ones.
Yeah, if you, um. Yeah, as long as I have a copy of the receipt, then I could, I could do that for you.
That's outstanding.
I can have the check mailed to you, or if you'd rather pick it up. I, it would take probably like a week or so, but. Whatever you prefer.
Yeah, no, you know, I'll, uh. I'll get something in there and, uh. Yeah, we can figure that out. That's great.
Okay.
And another quick note I wanted to make was that, uh. You know, I, I did, uh, I went and reached out to, uh. The, uh, JCA, Jewish Community of Amherst, Karen Rhodes from the cemetery, and just, uh, let her know that. And we had a discussion and, you know, the. Zoning by law setbacks does not apply to, uh, graves. Though it could apply to structures like tombs or mausoleums or that kind of thing. And I just, you know, left it at that, just so that, you know, to kind of close the loop on that. So, uh. That was that, you know. Uh, the other thing I want to mention, what was it? Was there another thing?
My other thing is on the agenda.
Your other thing is on the agenda, yeah. Oh, no, yeah, I, I, I was just going to mention that with the letter we sent to Coles, um. With the, uh. The sentence that, uh, Jeff asked us to put in. Um, saying, you know, including but not limited to, uh. You know, there's, the way that it was written. On the screen during that discussion, um. Was a little choppy, so I did add, uh, add. A couple of words in there just to kind of make it a clearer statement. I added the two words, uh. Four reasons, you know, something like, you know, the, uh, you know, you know, the board, you know, the disapproves of all four plans. Four reasons, including but not limited to the following. So without the four reasons in there, it was like, you know, we disapproved of the plans, including but not limited, limited to the following. It was just a little bit. Not quite a complete sentence. So I did, uh. You know, I, I was gonna try and. Yeah, I had concerns about making a change like that, uh, without. You know, going back to the board and having a vote, even though it's a minor change and is not a material change, um, but after discussing it with. A few different, uh, people, I, uh, decided to just go ahead and do that, just so that. It would look like a more, uh. Reasonable sentence and not something, you know, uh. That was done on the fly in a meeting. So, uh. And just, uh, note, you know, when I, I would say that's, uh. You know, whenever we're making edits on the fly in a meeting, uh, we got to just take particular care, uh. Particular care. To make sure that those. Do, uh, flow together nicely with, uh, you know, in and of themselves and, and with the, uh, surrounding, uh, language, just to. Because it's, it's on the fly and it's easy to make a mistake when you're doing things on the fly. So, uh, it's just a, just a best practices note on that. And that was all I had. Um, to say. Carrie.
I was just gonna add that, um. I sent that out on Thursday after we talked. We did, I sent a, the big packet to. Um, WD Coles, um. Registered with return receipt, which was a pain, I will admit. Trying to get that done. It seems to be a very complicated process. I was talking to the post, um. The, the postman at the, uh. Office, and he said that in his years that he's been here, he think he's only done like three or four, so it's not a very common practice, practice either. But, um, they did get sent out, and when I come in tomorrow, I should have the return receipts.
Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Nathan, do you want me to just pitch the Citizen Planner Conference briefly?
Oh, yeah, yeah, please do.
Yeah, so I'll stand in for Jeff Lacy, who reminds us all the time, but. I've gone, I think, twice, but the Citizen Planner. Group, I think you have a fuller name than that, but it's basically all of us across the state, so it's volunteers who are on the planning boards or dealing with planning issues. Um, it's at Holy Cross in Worcester. It's, I think it, it's on a Saturday for most of the day. It's usually like from nine to two or something. I, I'm not sure if I'm gonna go, but I did go last year. I, it's high quality stuff. I mean, they have. Town councils who have done municipal planning for a long time. They've got people from the state agencies. They've got people from planning boards who've been doing this for a long time. So. Um, if anyone wants to sort of. Learn more about how this world works and just gain more information. It's, it's a good opportunity.
Hey, can I put a pitch in for Jeff Lacy too? The, uh. He sent out a link to a. Local government guidebook for. Improving large scale solar, which. Agree or disagree, I found it pretty informative. Uh, it covered a lot of, a lot of topics that, um. Again, enlightened me on some things and gave me some other things to consider, um, so.
Did he send it to all of us?
I think so. Hold on, let me see if I can see. I know I tried to. When I, when I replied to him to thank him. I got it bounced back saying his mailbox was full.
Yeah, that tends to happen. Yes, Crocker.
Uh, he sent it. I mean, if I got it, it must have been to the whole planning board if I got.
Okay, I'll look for it. Thank you.
Yeah, it was on, uh, February twenty-second. Yeah, it was to the planning board. Nathan and Michael, you were, you were addressed separately. But anyway, it was worth.
Oh, yeah, there it is. Right.
So, that's all I had.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. All right, we're, we're getting to the end here. I don't think we have any unanticipated business that we're going to address right now, um. April first is a Monday, uh, so the second Monday would be, uh. April eighth. So that's, uh. I don't believe I have any conflicts. That's when we'll plan on having our hearing. For these, uh, zoning bylaws and hopefully deal with whatever else comes up on the agenda for that. Looks like an ANR. And, uh, maybe two ANRs depending. There's another one that's out there that hasn't been submitted yet. But that's, there's been inquiries for. And, uh. You know, we can. I just have a process question on the, on the zoning bylaws, I guess, uh. So we're gonna do a, a, a notice, um, we're sending these, uh. Drafts to the select board. Now, once we have the hearing, after the hearing. Closes. Does the planning board have the ability to make, uh, changes to the bylaw? I would assume so, right?
Yeah, yeah, so it'd be in the same. Meeting, so you know, we'll open up the, the hearing. We'll get whatever feedback. We're close to hearing. We will still be in public session. So at that point, based on the feedback, we can. Discuss a course of action. So if we want to take it, make any changes, then we could reschedule another meeting if we wanted to do it. And then. Finalize and, you know, have it posted.
All right, excellent. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All right, all right, thank you. Discussion. All right. Weston.
Aye.
Dickara.
Aye.
Hi, Croft.
Aye.
Raymond.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming tonight. And, uh. Have a wonderful evening. I'm an I.
Hi.
Good night.
Night, night.